majority of the dollars is at the school level so that they can support students. That's[561.32-568.32][S03] our cost in Title I. As we assess the situation, this fall, we're crawling. We're implementing[572.57-580.57][S03] the 2018 menu. It is new for everybody to get used to ordering off of a menu. So there[580.82-587.82][S03] is greater clarification around choices that can be made. It doesn't answer all of the[588.51-595.51][S03] questions because it's on the menu. It doesn't say what problem it's addressing. You know,[596.04-600.29][S03] if you have a low sodium diet, you probably ought not go to Chick-fil-A even though it's[600.29-606.91][S03] on the menu. It doesn't say how much of it you should have. It doesn't recommend the[607.32-614.32][S03] right timing for it. But we have it. And we're learning as we work through that process.[616.48-622.32][S03] We also know that we need to WALK to better support schools. So when we started our work[622.32-629.32][S03] on the 2018 Title I menu to guide work in FY19, the PDSA process really wasn't there.[630.41-635.41][S03] And so the questions that you find on the new executive summary that are answered or[635.41-642.41][S03] that are there to address the PDSA process were not there. We weren't being challenged[642.75-648.91][S03] to consider three different choices, things like that. So we will refine the menu in line[648.91-655.91][S03] with the PDSA process and Title I plans in the spring. And then in June, we're still[658.04-664.12][S03] walking. We're going to bring to you the FY20 plans. So there'll be the first time that[664.12-670.75][S03] schools have redone their school-wide Title I plans with the ESSA accountability system.[670.75-676.12][S03] So in October, schools will get their final designation from the Illinois State Board[676.12-681.62][S03] of Ed on the first iteration of ESSA accountability reports. We'll then go into a refinement[681.62-688.62][S03] process of the Title I menu and plans that you'll see in June. And then in the spring,[691.62-696.70][S03] we don't have 2019 on there, but we're running with full-site-based budgeting, and schools[696.70-703.70][S03] will have more time with the menu, more data through the accountability system, et cetera,[705.12-712.12][S03] to guide them. We think that an aligned program of instruction, core, and supplemental will[712.25-719.25][S03] better assist students and their teachers in teaching and learning progress. Doing[719.25-726.25][S03] different things, going in different ways, doesn't work well. We'll have more available,[726.25-733.25][S03] more readily available progress monitoring. So at a Title I convention, the Executive[733.82-739.82][S03] Director of McCrell, the Midwest Regional Education Lab, was telling about a research[739.82-746.82][S03] study that he and other education labs were funded to do. They, the funder, a branch[747.79-754.79][S03] of the federal government, wanted to know what works. And so they took 248 gold standard[756.41-763.41][S03] researched projects, processes, programs. And he said, we really came up with a two-word[763.62-770.62][S03] answer. Nothing works. And the crowd kind of got nervous and laughed. And he said, oh,[772.32-777.04][S03] it's okay, because we sat around our conference table and said, if that's our final answer,[778.25-784.25][S03] we're not going to be funded. And we like to eat, so let's dig again. And so here's[784.25-791.25][S03] what they found out. That one of 248 programs was fully implemented with fidelity, and[795.12-802.12][S03] that's why it didn't work. So every program has a design. And what they found was that[802.32-808.62][S03] folks were doing all kinds of things. That's the problem is implementation. So by having[809.16-816.16][S03] more readily available progress monitoring, we can better sharpshoot on implementation[816.25-822.62][S03] problems versus a program problem. We want research-based and vetted resources so that[822.66-827.41][S03] schools know if we're having a difficult time with English language learners, what[827.41-833.32][S03] might we pull off of the menu to address that, or an IEP possessing student. We also[833.32-837.75][S03] want to make sure that whether you go to Lewis-Lenin or Cherry Valley, you have similar[837.75-844.75][S03] experiences and opportunities. And so by vetting this menu, by putting in what does[844.82-851.12][S03] work with a plan for how to implement it, that should help students. And then you have[851.32-857.25][S03] to know why you're putting something on the menu, why you're using that, so that you[857.25-862.91][S03] can get to academic return on investment. And so that's one of the superintendent's[862.91-869.91][S03] challenges to us. And so we're trying to do that work in this. Quarterly, if anybody[870.25-877.25][S03] wants it, we have a GATA report. You got a GATA quarterly. And we can share those[878.75-885.75][S03] with anybody who wants them. And then in June of 2019, you'll have the new Title I[885.82-892.82][S03] menu and the Title I plans, like I said, will be revised based on all of those various[893.66-900.66][S03] things we're working on. So that's a broad scope. The Title I menu fully addressed in[904.29-910.16][S03] concept what was allowable to the federal government. The federal government is not[910.16-917.16][S03] interested in the Title I funding stream with astroturfing football fields. It's not[918.25-925.25][S03] at all interested really in making a nice library. It's interested in giving library[925.75-932.75][S03] books to support student learning. And so you do the lens of what is allowable as a[933.16-938.16][S03] first. We know that. And we have the state guidance. And we're going to improve our[938.16-945.16][S03] practice through MAP and PARK, now IR, IAR, SAT, and those sorts of things. And we'll[945.62-952.62][S03] bring that to you as time goes on. Questions that I may answer?[952.62-959.62][S01] I'll start with one. And so what assessments will be the evaluation tools? Would that[961.32-968.32][S01] be, you know, the MAP scores, the ACT scores, things like that?[968.32-969.32][S03] Yes and no.[969.32-970.32][S01] Okay.[970.32-971.32][S03] I think some of the programs, you know, a kindergarten initiative that is really[976.25-983.25][S03] a kindergarten, your best measure of that might be the kids, the kindergarten screening[983.38-985.25][S03] and performance eval tool.[985.25-986.25][S01] Okay.[986.25-992.16][S03] MAP is going to be a broad overview that is not going, you know, we sometimes say,[993.41-1000.41][S03] if you buy this pen, our MAP scores will increase by three RIT points. That's, we[1000.41-1006.54][S03] need to say, this pen will allow me to write 1,000 pages this semester. And we'll come[1006.54-1012.25][S03] back in June and say, this pen did in fact allow me to write 1,000 pages this school[1012.25-1017.25][S03] year. I think we have to get really clear that a specific and discrete action has its[1017.32-1024.04][S03] own data. Those various items compiled together ought to impact your MAP score, which will[1024.04-1027.75][S03] impact your PARK, now IR, score, or SAT.[1027.75-1028.75][S01] SAT.[1028.75-1029.75][S03] Depending on the tier level.[1029.75-1030.75][S01] Sure.[1030.75-1031.75][S03] I think those are all broad indicators. But you have to take several discrete actions to get there.[1037.08-1038.08][S01] Okay.[1038.08-1039.08][S01] Mr. Rollins?[1039.08-1042.32][S04] Yeah, I had a question on the allocations. I had a couple of questions. So I was a little[1043.47-1049.32][S04] surprised to see that the per pupil amount varies. I can sort of see what you're doing[1049.32-1055.16][S04] is that it varies based upon the percentage of low income in the school. So it looks[1055.16-1060.25][S04] to me like we're trying to concentrate resources in the schools with the higher percentages.[1060.25-1063.75][S04] But my first question is whether that's what we're doing and whether there's some sort[1063.75-1070.04][S04] of formula you were following for doing that? Because the amount actually obviously would
vary based on the percentage, but we're saying that the per pupil amount is varying as well. And then even using, assuming my guess is correct, there's some anomalies. And the one that I spotted is Lincoln Middle School, which has a 76% low income rate and is being funded at $700 per pupil, where all of the other middle schools are down with the other secondary schools. For instance, West has a 71% poverty rate and is only getting $440 per pupil. So, I mean, what's the differentiation for that?[1104.83-1110.16][S03] So the federal guidelines, you rank order, and there are a few different ways that[1110.29-1117.29][S03] you can do it. But you rank order by tier and by poverty percentage. So that elementary[1117.29-1124.29][S03] schools are grouped together, middle schools and high schools. The lower the poverty count
cannot receive more than the per pupil allocation for any of the schools above it in their tier. So a school that's 76% can receive $1,000 per student, and a school that's 75% could receive $1 per student if there are no others. Those are within the guidelines. The disposition,[1151.66-1158.25][S03] you also have to have hold harmless so that a school cannot be given nine, less than 90% the previous year's allocation. So it takes time to move up or down. The exceptions to that are a new grade level, not new sections of third grade, but when Riverdale was going up from K2 and we added third grade, those new students would flip it out of hold harmless range to accommodate that new population. So all of those factors get baked into it, if you will. And the federal guidelines, the state guidance is yes. You are absolutely correct. The purpose of Title I is born out of the War on Poverty. And so students who are served in schools with higher concentrations of poverty are to get more resources to the extent possible under the program.
Is there some sort of a formula that, is there a formula under Title I? Is there a formula that we've applied to change the per pupil amount?
No. We take where we were. We take the new enrollments, and we figure out where we can place the dollars that are also within hold harmless levels. So, no, you're not going to, there's not a state or federal guidance book that's going to say if a school is between 46 and 47, do this, 51 and 53, do that. It becomes making the math work on both of those levels. The federal guidelines are that if a school is 75% or above, it must be served. If a school is under 75%, but over 40%, it may be served. Those are the broad.
I'm just saying, I guess I can see both sides of this argument, because the other side is particularly if, depending on what this menu of resources is, we're giving fewer dollars per pupil to some schools and to others. And so I guess I'd like to hear some sort of an explanation for that. But then I'd also like to hear a specific explanation of why Lincoln seems to be out of order and is not with the other middle schools. It's the only middle school that's above 75%. So that kicks it to $700,000 or $700 per pupil?
Kennedy is actually at $800 per person, and they're at 83.16%.
Okay. That's a big drop-off, just for a couple of percentage points.
Other questions? Mr. Connor?
I have to say, the same thing struck me as Mr. Rollins. I guess if we assume that the general public is going to look at this, I'd say, yeah, maybe we need a little bit more explanation on that, because it's not intuitive in the chart. What you just said is that there was a two-tiered system, which is not, from my point of view, obvious in the chart. I think the other things that I'd say are things that I've said repeatedly, which is, it's really helpful when we have comparisons to prior years. Because I know it's not apples to apples, but some high level that says, hey, we had, you know, 14 million last year based on the following, and now this year we've got 12 points, whatever. I think that's really helpful, at least for me, to put it in perspective. I think the other thing that I'll comment on is that every time I hear an educational presentation, you guys have a lot of stuff up here that's not on the paper. And I think it's really helpful that the commentary, it doesn't have to be war and peace. I take at least peace, you know? And I think the point is, if we have at least some insights into what this means, because I was like Mr. Rollins, you know, it was really hard to make heads or tails of the per pupil amount. Plus, I have to say that there are some schools that are literally zero. I mean, I guess it's possible if you told me that that's literal, but again, it didn't make it exactly easy for me to follow. I was like, really? I had to spend several minutes on it because I thought that just didn't seem to make sense.
So the schools that are at zero, like Roosevelt, while we consider it a school, is not a school for other purpose. It's an alternative program.
Sure.
And they receive millions of dollars in separate funding. Wilson Aspire is a program, not a school. A.C. Thompson and Whiteswan are at $0 because they ceased to exist on June 30. But they're still in there from last year.
Okay.
So the state has to account for them somehow. The early childhood centers have no kindergarten through 12th grade students in them. So they're at zero. And the Marshals are significantly below the may serve federal poverty line. So that's why all of those that group is zero.
Okay. So that's what ineligible based on the ranking method means in English?
Yes.
Okay. I kind of like English.
And we've done annual Title I reports. We can put multiple years out.
Again, I'm not asking for every piece of detail. I'm just saying, when I read through it, it was, it just seemed like obvious questions. And I totally understand, by the way, the difference between a program and a school. So that, I won't bring it up here, but that does bring to my mind, we report schools. And it just seems to me that some of those are considered schools in some of the reporting we do.
Yes.
Whereas here, it doesn't. So...
Schools that don't get a report card from the state are generally not. Like ILC is also a program?
Yeah. No, no, I totally get that. But I guess my point is, it seems like other stats, these are treated as schools when we do our reporting. I do have one quick question. Let me get back to the other one. On the data collection, where physically do we keep that data?
Ms. Detman, do you want to talk about the data warehouse? Because that's in your wheelhouse.
So is that the answer? Is that we purchased the decision sport or decision ad, and now that's physically where we?
I just want to clarify which data.
Well, Mr. Wolf said that the data was collected as you went through. I mean, I'd have to come back to the slide, but on several slides.
Low-income.
Do you mean data on creating the Title I menu or data on how schools will progress monitor? I just want to make sure I'm answering the correct question.
Sure, how students are classified, because that's in the student information system.
Okay.
So student classification is in the student information system. If we're talking about anything relating to student data, then that would be in the data warehouse.
Okay. So characteristic data, I understand, would be in the student systems, at which we presume we pull from that into the warehouse, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's, so the fact that that's the source. But it was when Mr. Wolf said that we collected the data, that's why I wondered. So it is permanently kept in the warehouse? So of year-over-year numbers that will get out of the warehouse on all this, I assume?
So I think there's two parts to my response to your question. Number one would be yes for all IAR, MAP, SAT. IAR is formerly PARK, we changed names.
Right.
All of that will be kept naturally. All of that will be kept in the data warehouse.
Okay.
The WALK part of the plan is where schools are creating their own progress monitoring plans through the PDSA process. So they'll be able to say then, we selected this tool as part of our overall strategy, and here's how we're going to know in our classrooms on, you know, quarterly basis or whatever they choose, whether it's working or not working. And so not all of that data will be automatically available or uploaded to the data warehouse. And that would really be incumbent upon the teams at the schools to be able to show their progress monitoring. So there's several layers of data. All of them, though, reach the same outcome, which is, we had this target in mind, we selected this strategy, and now we're monitoring it closely to know whether we should continue or discontinue and change course.
So the Title I is really just one of several tools chosen, is kind of what I'm hearing?
Title I is our funding stream. And then from this Title I menu, I have a bank of resources that are organized by content area. And as a school, in a school leadership team, we align the selected resource with our goal. So the purpose of the menu is that there's been an extra layer of guidance from the central office that says, these are the things that we know are both allowable according to the grant guidelines and aligned to our new core curriculum.
And that's what this GATA is based on, I assume?
The GATA gives us a quarterly opportunity, 22 quarter, distinct quarterly opportunities to demonstrate the success and our progress on each of these different tools.
So those reports align with what the principals see on every one of their chosen tools?
More broadly, because we have the opportunity to turn in our quarterly Title I GATA report encompassing our schools in non-public school services, our charter schools, and our other public schools all together. So in that... So in that, we're going to talk about, we provided twelve thousand three hundred and eighty hours of tutoring. We observed these metrics. We provided this professional development. If it's out of state, we have to identify that specifically. If it is in state, we can do it collectively. We provided this professional development training. Fourteen teachers went to it. This quarter will impact this number of students and towards the annual goal, it should do this. So it's not going to be a page per school or even each expenditure, but it will be in broad categories.
Dr. Jarrett?
Let me just bring us back a step with, you know, one of the reasons I asked Dr. Wolf to include the school by school report, and this was why these committee meetings are so important. We've been presenting this data for years at Ed Committee, and so this is a great example of why a committee of a whole structure is really valuable, number one. Number two, when we went through this huge legislative change that I kept updating everybody on over and over and over again about Title I, I wanted to show the school by school report because that's why this is so important. There's kind, we talk about these big numbers like twelve point nine million dollars. And when people think we're just spending it as a district, what really gets lost is if you take forty-five percent off of these dollar totals per school, you really get a sense of the impact of that really bad state legislation. If you take an individual school, take Ellis, for example, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. If they wanted to hire people with that two years ago, you would take forty-five percent of that money off the top for any new person that they hired. So part of what I want you to see here is, and part of the reason we built the Title I menu, there really wasn't any point in having a Title I menu until recently because they couldn't, if they hired staff, it was almost cost prohibitive. So we almost encouraged them not to hire staff. Now, one of the big things that's on the staff is you can, as long as it is not supplanting what we're buying for everybody in the district, this truly gives the ability for things to go a long way. You can see now at a school that has a the highest level of need above seventy-five percent, but certainly for other schools as well on this menu, how much of a difference this can start to make. When we move to running, this is going to come back to student achievement. We talked about a crawl, walk, run approach. When schools are have a school-based scorecard and we are looking at how schools performing, where this context is really going to matter is we're going to be able to go back and look at how they spent supplemental resources and have really supportive but also challenging conversations about are you using the menu the right way? Are there changes we need to make in the menu? But this comes back to student achievement because we're talking about buildings in some cases that don't have a lot of other discretionary dollars. There are very prescriptive class size limits that say what a school can spend in terms of how many teachers they can have, how many guidance counselors they have, et cetera, et cetera. Title I can truly be a way that a school improvement team can say, here's where we are. We're struggling in these areas, we want to make some really targeted investments. So this is going to go from a really mathematical report that just talks about dollars being distributed to really one of the big ways we're going to see schools move the needle by how they invest these dollars. So this is going to be a really important conversation moving forward. So what went from kind of a compliance exercise candidly that we didn't manage particularly well, but wasn't really very impactful frankly, because schools couldn't do much other than buy stuff with the money. Otherwise, they lost a huge chunk of their money. So I think there's going to, this is going to be a really exciting opportunity for our district moving forward because these dollars go so much further. And these conversations are going to be connected to school-based performance in a way that they haven't been up to this point. So I it's good to know that there was this level of detail that wanted in terms of why we distribute the dollars. Frankly, it wasn't a huge topic prior to this point, and so we'll circle back on that. That was my mistake to not add the context because frankly, the reason I wanted it on there is I wanted everyone to see how each individual school is impacted. And I wasn't aware that everyone was as concerned about how the feds calculate it, but we will be happy to come back to that. But what we really wanted to draw your attention to is why we built a Title I menu in general. And we'll, we'd really love to keep this conversation going because there's going to be another pool of federal dollars, state dollars, excuse me, called Illinois empower power dollars that a number of our schools are going to qualify for, that we are going to build a menu for as well. So this is going to become a pretty significant endeavor as we build our budget this year. And this is the first, understanding how this works is really going to help us move to site-based budgeting. So sorry for the long filibuster, but I do want to properly provide the context for why this, why we're bringing this back. Because schools are going to be spending money out of this fund. And every time they spend money, I don't want everyone to go, well, where's the PDSA? What we're saying is there was a big PDSA we did when we built the the Title I dollars. And for this year, when school-based expenditures are approved from that, then we are going to say that the compliance has been met. But moving forward, as we build the FY twenty budget, this is going to be a big, big conversation about how we built site-based budgets around trying to move the needle on those individual school scorecards. So I wanted to give that extra perspective here.
Do you have another question, Mr. Connor?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mr. Escobado?
So I guess, so I guess I'm not necessarily interested in why, you know, the need for the creating the menu, but more how the menu was created and then the timeframe. The the crawl phase, fall twenty eighteen, what kind of, what kind of?
Criteria?
Criteria or, you know, what kind of development teams, selection teams were created to create this set of menu?
So we worked primarily with the curriculum department and the curriculum deans who are leading those curriculum leadership teams. And we took first our core curriculum and the the framework and the underlying philosophy of our core curriculum and ensure that we aligned resources with that and also that they were research-based as well. So for example, an easy illustration of this is we don't want supplemental resources that are rote memory drill and kill math facts. That's not supported in our core curriculum. We want something that encourages more problem solving and critical thinking. And so when we're looking at some software programs or other resource kits, we want to make sure that it's really helping students reach that deeper thinking. It doesn't stop at rote memorization. So that's one filter that we would have used. For integrated literacy, we looked at the ability of the resource to truly support integrated content and also support things that have been going on in our district for several years. So in our data collection phase, we learned from schools that they're using, for example, Daily Five and Cafe. Those are two different programs that are widely used across our district. We didn't want to simply eliminate things that have been done for several years just because we created a new menu. So those things still have a place on our menu and we've aligned the professional development and the purpose of those with the new curriculum.
Okay, so I guess let me get to the bottom of my question. So twenty nineteen, summer twenty nineteen, you're in a walk phase. It just seems to me that if we've had all this, for example, some of the services, programs that you contract, you might have been using them for years. I'm just kind of interested to see why it takes so long to get us to that phase. What am I missing?
We read, one of the big things that we redid is Dr. Jarrett talked about staffing. We rebranded our staff to be primarily student focused. So we had invested several years ago, a few superintendents ago, in a theory of action that said Title I dollars can't touch every student. And so we'll work with the staff who will in fact reach the students. I can tell you from a very broad standardized assessment, that did not get us the results that we wanted. And schools were using staff in all kinds of different ways. So the Title I menu said what our best practice is. And so there were two options. A Title I teacher who spends a minimum of sixty percent of his or her time in direct service with students. It can be up to ninety percent. The other ten, ten percent is reserved for data analysis, MT, that multi-tier system and support, that type of work. We also have a parent liaison. And so it freed up dollars. We went from twenty-three teachers who were, you know, a broad array of serving staff and students in the buildings to thirty-nine point seven FTE inhabited by forty-two people. Couple of schools have point five or point six, who are spending the majority of their time with students. Part of the GADA reporting is they're going to be articulating how many students they worked with and what were the metrics. So we'll be able to say, we did this change based on the research. Now what does our evidence say? And if those teachers, if that's not the right blend, we can re-blend it again or change it again. So we did make some very intentional decisions. There were some online programs. We, and I stood before members of the board, only Ms. McCulloch was on the board then, asking to approve Discovery Act Streaming Plus. We went from over a million uses per year to just over two thousand. We have not asked the board to re-up that contract. So we did try and be very responsive to that. We also, I think, are now gaining our feet on what MAP data tells us and how we can actually make informed conversations about that. The state went from ISAT to PARK. IR, Illinois Assessments of Readiness, will have consistent data, so we're not losing that, just the name changed. The state went from ACT to SAT. So we've had some data issues, but we certainly are trying to move along. What isn't being used, what doesn't have the right return on investment is gone. And then we went with research on staffing and that non, the lack of the penalty of the federal TRS that was forty-five percent. Not only did we go up nearly seventeen teachers, but also nine parent engagement specialists in schools.
Okay, yeah, my, again, my comment was just simply submitting plans for progress monitoring and consolidating contracts. I'm assuming it's something that we've been doing for for a while on collecting data. So getting to that phase, it seemed to me that should be shorter.
Yeah, so just real quick, what we were doing before, anything that was, we we just went back and forth with compliance about whether it was legal. What we're doing now is we pre-approved all of the things that we collectively believe will move the needle on student achievement, whether it's people or stuff. Before it was largely just stuff, okay? And now what you're doing in this first phase is you're ordering off that menu based on what's best for your school. So it was really, it had to be done first. What we're going to be doing as we expand is adding different pools of money to this work. So it isn't that we're going slowly, it's that we went from not having a process because there wasn't really a point in having a centralized process to adding something that I I hope really makes it easier for schools to get the resources they need more quickly so that they can move the needle on student achievement. So I, there's not really a delay was a situation where so much of what was viable wasn't worth doing because you paid a forty-five percent penalty. So now that people could actually order more, more, have more variety of things, we wanted to make sure that we made it cleaner and more compliant.
Mr. Rollins?
Just had one more hopefully really quick question. What's the difference between the Title I allocation, which is twelve point two million, and the amount available for distribution, which is nine point two million?
Great question. Some of the money comes off the top, a prorated share goes to non-public schools. And so in this current year, it's five hundred and fourteen thousand and ten dollars. A certain amount, one percent, goes to a required parental engagement piece. We fund one point six FTE in Earl Dotson's department. We are also born out of the nineteen sixty-five legislation involved with homeless services. And we fund two advocates in our FIT department. The, we support a tech specialist. We do summer programming and then four point five percent of it runs the Title I program.
Okay, so that all adds up to three million?
That's the difference.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Move on now to our second presentation, then Mrs. Allison is going to do the custodial performance report. It's been a busy summer.
It has.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share the results of the summer cleaning survey. I really appreciate that. So each summer, we have the opportunity to clean the buildings to their optimum level and get them ready for the first day of school. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the challenges that the custodial team faced, some missed opportunities and some cleaning successes that we had in those seventy-six days. To understand where we are now, it's, I want to take a minute to 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 discuss where we were a year from now. Last June, GCA was was exiting out of the district and we were implementing Airmark. Airmark provided their their onboarding plan in June ninth. So what we had, we had the beginning of the summer season with no equipment, no cleaning chemicals. We had no Airmark management plan. We did have, they did supply us with an onboarding team that we worked with on a daily basis to help implement their program and get them used to the RPS culture. Prior challenges that were reported in the September seventh, two thousand seventeen Operations Committee meeting were that lack of management, that skilled management that we were seeing in September, unsupervised custodians, no, no schedules, lots of, lots of vacancies. Again, we had some compromised cleaning methods because we didn't have that strong management team in place at that time. We were receiving poor communication from the Airmark management at that time and really poor responses to after hour emergencies. By December two thousand seventeen, there was change in the air. Airmark management understood and agreed with they needed to provide a change in the lead, in the Airmark leadership here in Rockford. That was in December. We also, I was graciously given a staff of two to help me monitor the custodial and billing emergencies after hours. So a couple of really big things happened in December. Cost or benefit versus cost of both of those chains, it's pretty rocky and risky actually to change management. It kind of shakes up the whole team. In this situation, I think the the benefit highly outweighed the cost. When it comes to adding new staffing, we are a district of forty-seven hundred employees. And I think if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the first time we've had a custodial team or a facilities team at night to oversee these processes and follow up on emergencies. So I think in both those system situations, we we, the benefit outweighed the cost by far, in my opinion. So moving on to assessing the situation, we want to talk a little bit about the new custodial survey and what we're doing at at this point. Summer cleaning, our expectations are outlined in our custodial contract. I've discussed them in the past. They range from top-down cleaning, we start dusting at the top above seven feet. And we're all the way down to detail cleaning of getting gum off of tables, underneath tables, or wiping down cafeteria tables and legs and seats. We're doing interior glass. There's, there's a lot of details that that are outlined in the contract. Outside of that cleaning, our custodians are challenged with moving items within the building. One of the big challenges this summer were the cleaning or were the summer projects. We had twenty different locations that had, that had major to minor construction. Three out of five high schools had painting, flooring and some furniture. Five out of seven middle schools had major construction and even library renovations. Twelve out of thirty-two elementary schools had, they had furniture, they had painting, they had flooring and they had. flooring, and they had, in some situations, library renovations. So, it was an incredibly busy, busy summer. Here's a couple slides, just to kind of give you an idea of that, those processes of construction. Again, custodians are moving everything out of the way in order for construction to happen. So, we have the Jefferson Pool Project, and then, we have a picture of the Eisenhower Abatement and Flooring. Flynn, we had HVAC controls and Unifent controls and lighting. Bloom and Brookview, we replaced windows, so we're pulling everything out of, out of those classrooms. Thurgood Marshall, we had abatement and HVAC controls. West, we had the piping project. And then, there's furniture. There's new furniture coming in, there's old furniture going out. Again, it's the labor of the custodians that, and, and the management and the Airmark management team that helped coordinate that and get everything in and out the way it's supposed to be. We're using the survey from September 2007 as our benchmark for custodial expectations. We're, we're looking at what we were and then moving forward from there. The new custodial survey was launched on August 17th. Our target audience was Building Principals and Building Champions. 45 buildings were actually, participated in the survey. Our response rate was 88.5%. We received 77 out of 87 responses. 93% we received on the principal response, that was their response rate, 80% on the Building Champions. Now, I do want to reflect that on that September survey, that was Building Principals only at that time, so it has changed a little bit. Again, some changes in this, this new survey, we're not using Survey Monkey, we're using K-12 Insight, which is a little bit different platform. Our responses that we asked, we had 16 questions that required either a strong degree of agreement or a strong disagree up to a strong agree. We also had 21 questions that were ranked one poor versus four excellent. So, a little bit different again on the method of, of questioning our target audience. If we're looking, this chart here identifies which area was not adequately cleaned. We had 10 individuals respond to this. So, what it does, the survey just breaks it down into those areas and shows exactly what that response is. And again, our questions went from very broad to very, to very narrow questions. In this chart you'll see is the building cleanliness based on items. So, if we look at, for example, the horizontal surfaces, we can see that 77 responses, about 20% of them ranked those horizontal surfaces as poor to fair. So, then, we can move forward and we can say, okay, what did we miss this year? What are we going to follow up on in the next week, in the next month, next year? What do we need to target? And then, we can broaden our, our, our questioning by not just desks or glass, we can ask what areas. In, in this chart that you're looking at, we're looking at the general appearance of entryways of the floors, hallways, walls, and it really breaks it down. And again, we can look at areas where we were very successful and areas that are still, that were, that were challenged, that we missed a little bit. We also wanted to ask the question about construction impact on day one. Day one being August 20th, the first day of classes. We felt this was relevant because there was so much going on in the construction in our buildings. We can see by the chart, we had about 37% that said, that disagreed with the statement, was some, was summer construction completed by the first day of school? And like I say, 37%, we're like, mm, nope, disagree, wasn't, wasn't done. So, again, this gives us the tools to move forward and plan accordingly in years to come. What we're looking at here, two charts. Again, we're looking at the chart from September 2017 to the overall readiness of the building in 2018. Although our 2018 data reflects strongly agreed, or strongly disagreed, disagreed, agreed, strongly agreed, the charts in, and the questions from 2017 were, one second. I'm sorry, does not meet satisfactory, meet satisfactory, and so on. So, they're not apples to apples, but there are, they are similar. So, we can, we can clearly see on where we're missing the ball and where we're achieving some, some positive results. Our exceed expectations from 2017 to 2018 has jumped from 19.13% to 38%. That identifies we're moving in the right direction. Our meets and exceeds expectation, again, if we combine those, were 16% higher than If history tells me anything, it tells me you want to know where the lowest scores were, which building scored the lowest. So, in, here we have a chart of the buildings that did not agree with the statement, my building was adequately cleaned at the beginning of school. The representatives of these schools scored that statement as they disagreed with it. The representatives of these schools strongly disagreed with it. So, what are we doing about that? We're obtaining that data, we're breaking it down, we're reading it, we're following up on why did they disagree? Why weren't they ready? What happened on every one of those cases? My team has it, the Airmark team has it, and we'll move forward from there. All in all, with all of the challenges, with successes, we were ready on the first day of school on August 20th, and it appears from the numbers that we are moving in the right direction and that, and that our, our building representatives are happier than they were a year from now. Some cleaning and project successes, we had Auburn was painted this year, and Eisenhower had new flooring, again, and abatement. Lincoln had 12 classrooms that were refinished. Rivertal, the front north-south corridor that had, those classrooms were carpeted, and the hallway was, it's almost like a VCT, it's called quartz, quartz, it's a low-maintenance vinyl tile that was applied. Some other cleaning successes, Flynn was a major undergoing for the Airmark team. We did not even have access to the building until August 10th. It was amazing, and then, they still pulled off at the very end, chemically stripping the floor in the cafeteria and polishing it. Some Kennedy classrooms, before and after. Hillman Hallways were actually diamond buffed. Airmark has agreed to use this trisac process on our Torazo. Some of the other hallways, the Torazo is Guilford, they're underway. East is still underway, but Hillman's were actually, Auburn's are still underway, but Hillman's were completely done. So, that is very low maintenance moving forward, and they look great. So, all in all, I think we're moving in the right direction. The numbers say we're moving in the direct, the right direction. There were some areas that were missed. It was a challenging summer, but the Airmark team that we have in town right now, they worked hard. They came together, they're, they're a great team and communicated, and I hope everyone's, I hope we're pleased. It's, we still need to push forward, we're going to still continue to have evening inspections on a nightly basis. I inspect in the morning, we'll continue with the surveys and move forward from here. Can I take your questions?
Mr. Connor?
Well, first, this is such a market of improvement, congratulations. Those of you that attended operations this past spring know that, I, I would just say, probably not the friendliest environment. I'm actually pleased about several things. Number one, first and foremost, is really good news that we're close to 90% on that responsiveness. One of the, those of you that weren't here last spring, one of the real deep concerns was especially around the Building Champions. So, again, congratulations, that's a huge improvement, and I think it's something like 25 percentage points, you know, just on that part. So, that's really huge. The second thing that came up repeatedly was the communication gaps, which sounds like we've really, the, the district thinks Mrs. Ellis has done a great job, but really kudos to Airmark for bringing folks along. This was one of the directional things, I think, that we had talked about as committees, so that's really excellent to see. And one of the things that came out of our discussions was, let's make sure we focus on the buildings where we have the most issues. And the fact that we do have some issues remaining, but it's very encouraging to see that the numbers overall are trending up, and even though you said that one section is not quite apples to apples, if you just eyeball the trending of the numbers, clearly, those are on the way up. So, again, that shows that I think there's been a, a really good goal setting. We're, we're striving to work together on that, and so, I'm just saying personally, I'm, I know it's not perfect, but man, this is really such a huge improvement, that congratulations to both the administration, Mrs. Ellis, and to Airmark, really, I'd say excellent job.
Thank you. It certainly is, it's a team effort.
Mr. Segal?
I'll echo the enthusiasm for much improved numbers, and the few schools that I have been in this school year do look really good. There are a couple of drums that need to be banged. On the opportunities for improvement, the strongly disagree, the three schools mentioned, Johnson, Lemon, and Westview, all elementary, what were the things that gave the strongly disagree score? Was it floors, bathrooms, cafeteria?
For Johnson, it was floors. Their floors did not get, did not get finished. The, the Torazo did not. It was just basically scrubbed and gone over with, with a coat of wax. They did not turn out well. So, I, I understand why, why Johnson was like that. Eisenhower, Eisenhower did an amazing transformation, so I have to really dig on that one.
Eisenhower was just a plain disagree, they weren't like strongly disagree. The other two were Lewis Lemon and Westview?
Lewis Lemon, even though the question was based on custodial, I'm going to say that when the question was answered, it was answered in the realm of ready, based on construction and cleaning.
Okay.
We're still implementing furniture in buildings.
Yeah, that's a big job, for sure. So, have floor scrubbers been acquired and installed in the elementary schools?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. And this isn't an Airmark-specific question, it's kind of nationwide. What's the turnover look, looking like these days, upon the employees?
I'm seeing some turnover. We're seeing, we're seeing turnover, we're seeing custodians go to different districts.
That's really it for, for me, but again, I'm really encouraged by the progress that, that has been made. I know we were really hard on, on Airmark getting going, and I think a lot of that was, you know, perhaps even frustration that maybe belonged with GCA, but from what I've seen so far in this school year is getting off very, very well, from a custodial standpoint. Thanks.
Mr. Owens?
Well, just echo, it's already been said in a different way. I keep getting told that anecdotes are not data, but I think they're a form of data, and anecdotally, I'm not hearing anywhere near the number of complaints that it was a year ago or two years ago.
That's true.
So, I, I think that matches up with what we're seeing in the surveys. If it didn't match up, I, you know, I'd start questioning the survey data, but I, I, everything that I'm hearing or not, I should say not hearing, would tend to support what you've just said, so I think we are moving in the, in the right direction. Thanks.
Ethy, what's the frequency of future surveys? How often will they be done?
From my understanding, we're going to continue with a monthly survey.
Monthly survey, okay.
Unless I'm told otherwise.
Okay, good. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. What's the, the response rate of this surveys? Like, how many people does it go out to?
In this situation, it went out to 87. We had 77 respond.
And then, the other, I guess, just from my own understanding, you talked about some of the, some of the items that I guess I wouldn't associate with custodial, like moving furniture. Can you elaborate more on that?
Our custodians, or Airmark custodians, excuse me, they're actually the interior labor of our buildings. We have distribution who will bring curriculum material, furniture moving in and out to the, to the exits of the buildings, to the receiving rooms. But, once it hits those receiving rooms, our custodians are the ones that bring it to where it needs to go. So, it's old furniture coming out, it's new furniture coming in, it's breaking down multitude of boxes, getting them in the recycle containers, so.
And I guess what come my attention is, for example, like, what, moving arch equipment or furniture, for example, is that something that's been accounted for with, I don't know, I would say even the right skill set, right? Because there's even a trick of the trade for moving, you know, there's a whole industry for movers. So, is that accounted somehow that there's, the way the resources allocated for different tasks throughout all the different tasks that they have, that are not just cleaning and?
It's built into our contract. So, the expectation was, was out there, that this is, this is our labor force, and that's why we have desk movers and chair movers and the equipment and dollies, so the custodians are not hurt.
This is, only did you want to comment on? Mrs. Holden, did you want to comment on that? Okay, I see you're sneaking up behind. Okay.
The only thing I wanted to add about that is that we are looking for next summer just because of the volume of furniture and things that we were having our custodians do, which took away from some of the cleaning that they really needed to do. We're looking at doing it in an alternative way next year, which may involve professional movers, just because, again, the volume, the, the gyms were filled with furniture, both incoming and outgoing, and hallways were filled. So we just, given the amount of furniture that we've been purchasing, we want to make sure that we're also keeping our buildings clean and our, and the Airmark focused on that.
Okay. I think your question really was, is there a better way to do it? You know, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, very good. Any other questions? No, thank you all, and keep up the good work, and we'll be looking forward to even better numbers next time, so. Okay, our third report is the 2018 tax levy and projections, shall say there is presenting tonight.
Good evening.
Aye.
So tonight, I'm, we'll be presenting the 2018 tax levy scenarios and how each may affect our operating fund balances of the district. Sorry. Got it, okay. So as we look forward to deciding on our 2018 tax levy, we needed to look at our overall financial projections of the district. And when we forecasted out through 2021, we notated that there was slight revenue increases with year-over-year expenditure increases. So the result of that is our operating fund balances have been declining and we're looking forward to presenting opportunities for, to close the gap between our revenue, slight revenue increases and our increase in expenditures. So some of the assumptions that we built into our projections on our operating revenue side, we left our evidence-based funding at our 2019 levels of $143.8 million coming in. Our state and federal grants, we left at our flat 2019 budgeted levels, and there's a slight increase in our CPPRT revenue based on our 18 actuals that we received in. For our tax revenue assumptions, we do have a 2% EAV built into our projections. We have new property values at 7.5 million increasing over the '20 and '21 fiscal years, and we have a couple of different scenarios that we'll be looking in the future slides on our consumer price index assumptions. For our operating expenditure side, we definitely have included our contractual salary increases based on our bargaining unit contracts, and we had left our supplies and purchase services expenditures budgeted or projected at our 19 levels. So we definitely need to look for opportunities to increase our revenue streams and also maintain our expenditures as we're projecting them in the future years. So as we look forward, we need to be sure that we can still maintain our fund balance board policy, which is keeping 25% of our expenditures on hand in our fund balances. We also need to look for opportunities to eliminate our deficit fund balances. So in our projections, we incorporated our fund balance transfer between transportation and operations, and you'll see how that affects those fund balances in the next slides to come. And reviewing our financial reports monthly to understand how we're performing against our budget is definitely key to assess our operating fund situation. So these are three CPI scenarios that we have mapped out, so we can take a look at what each does to our fund balances on the preceding charts. Our base scenario is a zero, taking a 0% CPI for our tax levy in 2018, leaving our evidence-based funding flat at our 143 million and those other funding assumptions that we've built in there for other revenue streams. And we are taking a five-year look here. You can see for, we look two years back from 2017 to 2018's actual fund balances. That's the red line on top, our 19 projected budgeted fund balance, and then moving forward, where we stand to land based on our, our assumptions for 2020 and 2021. The blue line there is our fund balance, 25% of expenditure policy, so we can see as we move forward, we're tending to, our fund balances are tending to decrease, and at some point, we may even cross that fund balance policy. Down at the bottom here, we have our actual fund balances by fund, so our Fund 10 Educational Balance, you could see is, is declining year-over-year. Operations and Transportation, operations is fund balance increases while Transportation decreases. That's a result of that continued operating fund transfer that we've built into our projections. Our next scenario here assumes a 1% CPI, so again, between 2019 and 21, fund balances are declining, but at a little less than rate as at the 0% CPI. Again, Education Fund Balance declining year-over-year, and our Operations and Transportation, you can see the direct relationship related to that fund balance transfer. The next scenario assumes a 2.1 CPI, and that was our actual 2017 federal rate. Again, flat evidence-based funding, and we can see that over the next couple of years, our fund balances are leveling out a little bit. And the last slide here shows a 0% CPI, but we do have, we did incorporate a 5% increase in our evidence-based funding, approximately $7 million over the next, sorry, for 2020 and 2021. And with that scenario, again, we see that our fund balances are increasing, assuming that we received that continued support through our evidence-based funding model. So this slide illustrates our tax levy rates by our tax scenario, and basically will just identifies, based on the levy decisions, where our tax rate is going to land, our school tax rate. For the 0% and 1%, you can see that it's, year-over-year is declining a bit, but the 2.1%, it kind of stays constant between '18 and '21 fiscal years. This is just another illustration of it on a, a line chart for you, so you could see how year-over-year the rates, tax, school tax rates are declining or will decline potentially. And this slide demonstrates our, this is actually our 2017 tax rates by school district and the percentage of the total tax bill that relates to the tax rate. So for us in 2005, our total tax bill rates 14.84%, and essentially 52% of that goes to our schools. There was a slight change just made, so North Boone, what you had received, what was actually published before, we, you know, was, we had made a slight change to that or correction to it. So this is the current data for that school district. So we definitely want to stay tuned to our strategic plan and goals, priorities, by proactively forecasting and allocating our resources that meets the needs of our taxpayers and our community, and to show how we're excellent stewards of our public money. That's kind of, you know, looking, looking ahead at our financial projections, we definitely want to make sure that we're doing what we can to, to really spend our money wisely. So finance, we'll provide monthly financial reports with quarterly projections ongoing, and also that will show us how our district is operating based on our budget. So we definitely take time to review financial reports, look at our fund balances, look to see, you know, if we're performing favorably or unfavorably against our budget, and report that on a monthly basis. So in summary, by providing these future year projections based on our different tax levy scenarios, we are hoping to identify ways that we could move forward regarding our 2018 tax levy.
Comments or questions? Mr. Segal.
Did you say that you use an EAV assumption of an increase of 2% annually?
Yes.
Okay. Do you feel like that's pretty accurate for our present situation, or is that just kind of a historical number to use as your assumption?
I think that was a historical projection based off of our data.
It's been trending upward. So we were at, when we look at the budget presentation, we were trying to get 1.8, it's getting up to 2%, so we used 2% for that.
Dr. Jarrett, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I mean, if you look at historical trends, we lost about $560 million from the 2011 levy to the 2015 levy. From the 2015 levy to the 2017 levy, we're up about $11 million, and then whatever we've added for '18 this year is about 1.8% of just over $2 billion. So, you know, we're, we're starting to see some modest growth again. It went from plummeting to stabilizing to now modestly growing, and I think what we're seeing, it seems reasonable to project it at 2%, but we'll certainly give that caveat anytime we present what assumption we're using. And if we go for a year and it drops back in the other direction, we'll certainly immediately make those corrections in future budgeting projections. But anytime you do these five-year projections, you've got to throw it somewhere. To give you a sense of, our bonds, for example, were sold based on the assumption that we'd be growing by 1% a year. So we aren't taking any huge risk other than that we are projecting out potentially a more favorable picture of what would happen with the tax rate.
That it? Mr. Rollins, what's next? No? Okay, Mr. Connor.
Ah, so on your one slide 12, you have a 5% increase on the evidence-based funding. Is that kind of in the ballpark? I mean, there's similar question on this one. Actually, I have a little bit more question on this one. What our range would be for the percentage increase on this? Or, you know, 5% is a target, but does that seem like a realistic target?
I think that becomes a political question at that point. I mean, we're giving the board scenarios. I think what we are, have done as a board for the last eight years is, as long as possible, we've set the levy at zero, at 0% growth, at a, anywhere between 13 and $15 million level, lower than what we collected in 2011 when we dropped the levy for the first time. When tax, when the value of property was plummeting, all that did was limit the damage. Moving forward, we're starting to actually see about 29 cents in rate gains over the last two years. So I think it's just going to come down, when we set the levy, to a couple of things. We're going to have to determine what we're comfortable with risk and what we're comfortable with in terms of believing that the state is going to continue to honor the evidence-based funding commitments that it's made. That's candidly what's allowed us to do this strategy. The other upside for us taking a really aggressive stance on this is, we, as 52% of the tax bill, we can send a really clear message to the other nine bodies that make up the other 48% of the tax bill, and encourage that they all continue to hold the line. I'm in favor of whatever will get us a competitive tax rate as quickly as possible. I think the board has done everything it could do, but there's not much you can do when, when rates are going, when, when value is rapidly falling. Now that we have some increases, I think it's just going to come down to our collective comfort level. So this is just more of a reflective opportunity. I wish I had my crystal ball and whether that's the right assumption.
No, I think it was really more a judgment question.
But yeah, yeah, but I think, yeah, the judgment piece, I, I think we're going to steer in any, of course, everyone's going to, there's going to be pressure to take 1% or 2.1% if that's, if that's available. And I think it's going to be a judgment call with how quickly we can drive the rate down, along with how, if you go too long without getting new revenue, at some point, you create a structural deficit that you can't recover from. So I think those will be the, the dueling tensions that, that the board deals with, and I, we'll do everything we can to give you the most information as possible, so you can, so you can make a really, as good of a decision as you possibly can without having a crystal ball.
Mr. Ciar?
I just want to add one thing for the evidence-based funding. We did budget that at 6% increase from last year based on the general state aid low point of our increases, so using this 5%, and we did come in at that, we actually exceeded that amount.
Okay.
So that's really what we had to...
So the point is, we have evidence, yeah, okay, so we have evidence for that 5% is kind of the point.
Yes.
So that's a reasonable assumption.
Yes.
Sort of.
Well, as far as, I mean, we only have one year.
As reasonable as we could make it, all right. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Our, our estimate was right for this year, so that's what we have to go by it at this point.
Yeah, I know. Broken clock is right twice a day. Yeah, but still, yeah, okay.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Rollins?
So the assumptions on the rates, what happens with the rates, you've indicated that's based on whether we take CPI or take portions of CPI. What about the new property? Is that, are the numbers that you're showing there, is that excluding new property? Is it including new property?
It's including new property at, I think, 7.5 million a year.
So we could actually drop it more if we excluded the new property as well, which we've done in the past?
Um, I don't know.
Yes. I mean, whatever, whatever that equates to, that...
Yeah, we could do another scenario on that.
Yeah, we can look at any...
We could, we could run it that way as well. We just include a new property.
Yeah. And I'll just echo Dr. Jarrett's comments. I mean, I, when I started on the board, it was, the rate was under seven, it was in the sixes. And so I was, I watched the rate go the opposite direction, and if we have an opportunity to bring it back down, I think that's in the long-term best interests of the school district and certainly in the best interests of the community, so, for my two cents. Now, from a timing standpoint, if I remember right, we do the levy resolution in November, is that right?
Yeah, we bring it forward in the fall, yes. I think we typically have done the first look in October, and then we bring it forward for approval in November.
Okay. So we've got like two months to think about this and talk about it?
Yes, it was just to start the discussion.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Connor?
I, I did forget to say, and really give a lot of credit to the Finance Department, these charts are just such a world better. I mean, really and truly, I think every year it's gotten better, but this is really, I'd say, the best yet in terms of clarity, so really, good job.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Very good job. Any other questions or comments? If not, we do not have any public speakers. Is there any other comments or agenda recommendations for this evening? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move back, Mr. Connor, second amendment. Mr. Segal? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we adjourned at 7:00 PM.